Welcome everyone to the December meeting of the municipal bill of the city council. Let's rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can the clerk read the minutes of the November 6th regular city council meeting?
Mayor Milner opened the regular city council meeting for the month of November to 2012. He then recessed the city council meeting until the public hearing on ordinance 2012-08 is concluded and will then reopen the council meeting. Mayor Milner reopened, previously recessed, the city council meeting and asked all to stand and pledge allegiance to the flag. Members present were Vice Mayor Bobby Chapman, Ms. Delia Bowman, Mr. Steven Stewart, and Ms. Josephine Chapman. He asked for the clerk for a reading of the October 2nd, 2012 council meeting minutes. After the reading, he asked if there were any corrections. Mr. Chapman stated that 2012 was given to the county in 2018, not 2012. Mr. Dorsey Cooper said that reading was wrong and he can say 2018. The mayor asked for review of the tape. He then asked council to approve the minutes with a pending correction from 2012 to 2018. Mrs. Stewart made a motion to approve the minutes with pending corrections made from 2012 to 2008 and was seconded by Ms. Chapman. The mayor asked all to agree to signify by saying aye. All agreed and the minutes were approved. He asked for a reading of the public hearing on October 23rd, 2012. After the reading of the public hearing minutes, the mayor asked for a motion to approve minutes as read. Ms. Chapman made a motion to approve minutes as reading was seconded by Ms. Bowman. The mayor asked all to agree to signify by saying aye. All agreed and the minutes were approved. In public request, Ms. Richards spoke with her concerns about the funds needed to keep library open for 30 hours per week according to state requirements. Ms. Mary Jones spoke for approval of the new ordinance and making the change to the definition of kennel. Mr. Larry Stewart spoke again on his request for documents at table planning commission meeting. He took call a meeting of the planning commission. He asked that the ordinance be approved and the definition of kennel changed to master state. Under mayor's report, the work on the rebuilding of the wellhouse number one has begun. The service pole was set and all the electrical control circuits have been moved and connected to outside equipment. The power to the old building has been disconnected and the county has been notified. The demolition of the building will start any day. The engineers have sent a final pitch list to Fortis Engineering concerning the sewer rehabilitation projects. This means that Fortis thinks they have finished with the rehab work throughout the city. Fair enough, these few items are all that stands between them and completing our project. Under the financial report, Mayor Milner explained there is a revised budget on the agenda for water and sewer operation, but the one that runs through September is the old budget. We will have under run on our projected income group the first nine months. This means our total expenses have exceeded our revenue. Revised budget will make adjustments which will bring everything into balance. He continued explaining the remaining accounts state mayers fund to support the city. Under new business, the mayor read the title of the ordinance, 2012-08.
Correct reading, whole business and whole business.
I'm sorry. Under whole business, the mayor read the title of ordinance, 2012-08-1. He said this is my shelter ordinance as drafted by the city attorney. With many of the speakers, our last quarter night, did the addition of another paragraph which would change another definition, zoning code. 10 years ago, Conover County adopted zoning code in hopes it would prevent a landfill coming into the county. That adoption of zoning code will appeal by those who wanted the landfill. The court grew in their favor because of procedures used in the adoption process. He advised the council if they wanted to make this change to request the city attorney to prepare an amendment and be sure everything is in compliance. He asked for a motion to adopt ordinance 2012-08-1. Mr. Chapman made the motion to adopt 2012-08-1 and was seconded by Mayor Milner. When polled by court, the ordinance was adopted by a vote of three to two. Ms. Josephine Chapman requested the city attorney be asked to draft an amendment to ordinance 2012-08-1 changing the definition of kennel in the ordinance. The mayor read resolution 2012-006, budget amendment. This is an amendment to reset the water and sewer budget. It will also get the solid waste budget, a slight increase by transforming funds from the general funds to the solid waste budget. This will take the rate increases for water and sewer that were adopted last month and incorporated into the current budget. He asked to have a motion to adopt resolution 2012-006. Mrs. Stewart made the motion to adopt resolution 2012-006 and was seconded by Ms. Chapman. When polled, all were agreed to adopt the resolution and the motion carried. Mayor Milner read resolution 2012-007, general funds budget for 2013. This is the budget that includes the allotment for the library. Ms. Bowman made a motion to adopt the resolution 2012-007 and was seconded by Ms. Stewart. He wants to increase the library funds now as the time proposed an amendment. We have $7,000 in the budget. The request on the library is to raise that to $9,000. To do this, the motion has to raise the amount by $2,000 and tax revenue by $2,000. Mayor Milner asked Ms. Bowman if her motion is to amend the resolution 2012-007, increase funds for library from $7,000 to $9,000, increase tax revenue by $2,000. And she answered yes. Ms. Chapman seconded the motion. He then stated they were voting on the amendment which would add $2,000 to revenue and $2,000 to expenses. He asked all to agree to signify by saying aye. All agreed and the motion carried. He then stated they were now voting on resolution 2012-7. When polled, clerk, all agreed, when polled by clerk, all agreed and the motion carried. Mayor Milner read the resolution 2012-008, enterprise budget for 2013. After reading, the mayor asked if there was any discussions or questions on the resolution. There being none, he asked for motion to adopt resolution 2012-008, enterprise budget. Ms. Bowman made the motion to adopt resolution 2012-008 and was seconded by Ms. Chapman. The clerk polled the council members and all agreed to adopt resolution 2012-008 and the motion carried. There being no further business, we discuss, Mayor Milner, adjourn the meeting.
Are there corrections or additions to the minutes? I have a few. On the third line, the ordinance, no, I'm sorry, that is correct. Bottom of the second page, where the sentence says, "When polled by the clerk, the ordinance was adopted by a vote of three to two." The guidelines from GMA for preparation of minutes indicate that the people's votes will be identified. So you need to either identify those who voted nay or those who voted positively, either way. But I believe it was Ms. Chapman and Ms. Stewart who voted nay. She can double check, huh?
Ms. Chapman, yeah.
Ms. Stewart, I believe, voted nay.
Mayor Josephine voted yes.
On top of the next page, Ms. Chapman requested the city attorney be asked to draft. I don't believe she asked for amendment to ordinance 2012. I think she wanted an amendment to the zoning code. That is what we have on the agenda tonight. Are there any other corrections? Could I have a motion to approve the minutes as corrected?
I motion to approve the minutes as corrected.
Is there a second? Was Ms. Stewart, Ms. Stewart seconded on this one? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. That's all approved. Minutes of the public hearing, November 6th.
Mayor Milner opened the public hearing. Members present was Vice Mayor Bobby Chapman, Ms. Delia Bowman, Mr. Steven Stewart, and Ms. Josephine Chapman. Mayor Milner stated this was the advertised hearing on ordinance 2012-08-1 and ordinance submitting appendix A zoning of the code of ordinance, the city of Crawfordville, Georgia, to define the term animal shelter and provide for such uses to reveal any laws in conflict therewith and to establish effective dates. He asked anyone who wished to speak to come forward and state their names. Several members of the ordinance came forward to speak in support of the ordinance. The names of those who spoke in favor are as follows. Ms. Kendall Richards, Ms. Stewart, Ms. Earl Fowler, Ms. Gay Radler, Mr. Cy Easters, Ms. Bonnie McKinnon, Ms. Linda Franklin, Mr. George Richard, Ms. Campbell Williams, Mr. Rod Connor, Mr. Yorg Merkle, I'm probably late carrying that name up, Mr. Larry Michael Check, Mr. Larry Stewart, Ms. Mary Jones, Ms. Ruth Daisy, Ms. Cheryl Young spoke against the ordinance. As Ms. Rice came forward to speak, Mayor Milner advised her yet to temporarily recess the public hearing, but she could speak when we reopen. After a brief recess, the mayor reopened the public hearing. At this time, Ms. Julie Rice, Ms. Paul Beckman, Ms. Luigi Agneson, and Ms. Julia House came forward to speak in support of the ordinance. Councilmember Vice Mayor Bobby Chapman, Ms. Delia Bowman, and Ms. Josephine Chapman also lost their opinion on the ordinance. There being no further comments, Mayor Milner stated the public hearing from ordinance 2012-08-01 is adjourned.
Are there corrections or additions to the minutes? Could I have a motion to approve the minutes as read?
I make a motion to approve the minutes 6, 7, 8.
Is there a second?
Not second.
Motion by Ms. Bowman, seconded by Ms. Chapman. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, like sign. The minutes are approved. On the call council meeting of November 29th, 2012.
Mayor Milner opened the council, well, Mayor Milner welcomed the council members and opened the meeting. He asked all to stand and pledge allegiance to the flag. Members present was Vice Mayor Bobby Chapman and Ms. Steven Stewart. Mayor Milner told the council members that when he noticed after the meeting he had a different agenda. After sending the notice, Chief Evans turned in the resignation on November 27th, 2012, and turning over equipment and properties belonging to the city on November 28th, 2012. Reason I called the meeting, I felt he had abandoned the job. Mayor Milner stated he received a letter from the Department of Public Safety last Monday. It said the city police have been suspended from using radar for 90 days. Also, we are to do in-house retraining of our police officer. Now that circumstances have changed completely, I will write back and tell him the chief has resigned and says I was the one who requested the investigation. That discovered this request, they give consideration and mitigate the punishment. Mayor Milner informed council members that he had already posted an ad on several free websites and he was going to suggest we place the ad in the Advocate Democrat, the Herald Journal, and the newspapers in Washington and Sparta. The ad will run for two weeks in each paper. Applications need to begin by November 20th, 2012. It will be early January before we start with the interviews. Mayor Milner stated he had spoken with Sheriff Richards and told him Chief Evans had resigned. The sheriff asked if we willing him to provide coverage. The sheriff will talk about what the charges to the city will be. There will be no fine revenue generated for the remaining two months of this year. I had thought we would have to take some action in discharging Chief Evans, but with the resignation, there is no action to take. Unless you have some disagreement with the action I propose going forward. There were no objections. The mayor, there being no further business, Mayor Milner adjourned the meeting.
Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? It is written December.
Right, she said.
Oh, she spoke. I think you did read November.
Application need to begin by December.
Yeah. It's correct in the printed copy, it's correct. Motion to approve the minutes as printed.
I motion that we approve November 29th, minutes as printed.
Is there a second? Motion by Ms. Stewart, seconded by Ms. Bowman. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. The minutes are approved. Close the request.
Mayor Milner, members of the council. My name is Kendall Richards and I'm here this evening as the president of the Hall of the County Chamber of Commerce. I know that you all are aware that one of the missions of the Chamber of Commerce is certainly to support the business community. Another one, of course, is to encourage new businesses to come into our community. And it's in the spirit of that mission that I'm here to ask your help. The request concerns a piece of property that is located just up 278 where Commerce Street and 278 come to a point. I think most of you know what I'm talking about. The city owns a little piece of that point where there's a sign and I believe some gas works. There is also just a teeny sliver of that property that belongs to Ms. Rocker. The property I'm talking about is the next lot. I'm sure all of you have seen it. It has the remains of a trailer and some other debris on it. I know that work has already been done on that property. It looks better than it used to. Certainly appreciate that. But I think you can also see that that property is essentially in a real strategic spot. People see it when they come off I-20 coming to Crawfordville. They see it when they come off of Athens, the road from Athens, when they come to Crawfordville. And it's the feeling of the Chamber of Commerce, the members of the chamber, that it would be very good if the city, we want the city, to exercise whatever authority they have that they can exercise to clean that property up in the hopes that those, anyone coming through there, coming to Crawfordville, thinking of having a business, hoping to have a business, or even visiting the park, will not have to look at that eyesore. And so we're asking you to exercise whatever authority you have to work with the owners of that property or whatever you have to do to get that property cleaned up. We think that it will be for the good of the whole community and certainly for the business community. So that is our request to you, Ms. Eaton.
I will respond cautiously. Our municipal court judge asked us if we would pass a revised nuisance ordinance so that he could, through the court, address problems such as that. We passed, and such an ordinance is on the books, and he hadn't moved ahead. I think he knew that property was a concern, but I think his focus had been on Cotton's property. And when discovered that it has asbestos in it, it kind of knocked everything he had in mind to do in the head because the city was willing to spend a small amount of money to remove the debris on the Cotton property, but we were not willing to spend the kind of money that asbestos adds to the overall cost. And I guess, I'll talk to Judge Ford, maybe he just kind of felt defeated. But I mean, he got what he said he needed, so.
Great, so.
We have given him the tool.
Good, great, that's great. Thank you, thank you. Please do send him, thank you. Great.
Continuing, put the request. Put the request closed. Next item, mayor's report. In the minutes, we mentioned that the demolition of the wellhouse was supposed to take place. Mr. Whale was quite interested a month ago in moving ahead. Apparently, he didn't motivate Davinsky because nothing has happened in the last month. I will send Mr. Whale in the morning. I presume the county commission meeting. Since it looks like December is going to be very good weather again, I'm going to urge him to move out and let's get this guy underway. We talked in the past about the final requirement down at the sewage treatment plant is that the bottom of the old sewage pond be encapsulated by a cup of a six-inch layer clay or dirt. The engineers have finished that plan and submitted it to EPD for approval. We're waiting now to hear from EPD, but the cost is much larger than I had thought it would be. Engineers now estimate that it will cost around $48,000 to encapsulate that pond, provide a drainage structure to be sure that any water that is properly routed out of it and flowing into the stream going away from there. But I did not see how the city could afford more than about $30,000 cost. We were going to go to bids and depending on what they came, how they came in, we would have the option to reject all bids. But he has not yet gotten approval back from EPD. But in the meantime, we finished up the project that we had EPA grant funds on the sewer rehab and there's about $23,000 unspent from that grant. And we have been in touch with the manager at EPA who is responsible for administering the funds coming into Crawfordville. And they are quite willing to consider spending this money on another environmental improvement of this fall sewage treatment in our city. So at least verbally, we have a commitment to spend that, those grant funds to do this project, but it's got to be formalized in the proper documentation and get signed off on by EPA. We keep our fingers crossed. I hope we got good news here. Moving on to financial reports. As you can see from the balance sheet, we have funds on hand and a general account. Continue to meet our obligations. Budget for the month of October. Revenues have under run by about $900. Our total expenditure has under run by $4,700. So we are in good shape on managing our funds. Breakdown, the cost of general government, next page, is under run by $300. The cost of judicial is under run by $1,300. The cost of public safety is under run by $193. Public works is under run by $2,600. And the cost in recreation is under run by $200. We cross the border, we under budget. The next is balance sheet for the enterprise operation. Again, we have ample funds to meet our obligation. There are a lot of funds shown in there that relate to the various grant projects and of course, they're not accessible to us to use. Moving on over to the revenue and expense for the water and sewer fund. Our revenues have under run by $400 for 10 months. Our total expenses have overrun by $700. Part of that is because of the capital outlay. You see the lineup that way, it says $848. That's where we did the electrical work down on the, locating the wellhouse and getting the, all the electrical out of that building. the electric, all the electrical out of that building. When I allocated the general fund, the budget for this capital project, I put it all in November, I didn't put any money in October, so we'll catch up with that. You've already allocated sufficient funds to do all this, it just wasn't spread over the right month. We're in good shape on that. The next one is the solid waste. There we have underrun on income, we actually overrun on income by fifty-six dollars, and our total expenses have underrun by sixty-one dollars, so we've actually, overall, we're about a hundred and seventeen dollars to the good. So financially, we're still in good shape. The next item on the agenda, new business. This is the ordinance that was requested by Ms. Chapman to change the definition of kennel in the zoning code. Ordinance twenty twelve dash twelve dash one, and ordinance amending appendix A zoning of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Crawfordville, Georgia, to define the term kennel and to provide for such uses, to repeal any laws in conflict therewith, and to establish an effective date. Ms. Chapman, since you requested this ordinance, do you wish to introduce it?
I motion that we adopt.
You don't have to move, you can, we can adopt it. All you do is, you sponsor it tonight.
Oh, I'm sponsoring this ordinance.
Okay, very good. This will be referred to the City Planning Commission for first public hearing. In accordance with the zoning code, that hearing must be advertised at least fifteen days before the date at which the hearing can be held. Any council member have anything to say?
I have one thing. First response was call to the school tonight, but they never did show up. And the concern, I was talking to Darrell, and the EMS from Washington, they came, but the M at the, the first one, it never did. Had a child with a severe bleeding nose and couldn't get it stopped.
Darrell calling, whoever you are calling for the fire, yeah. Call for the emergency.
I asked, uh, two weeks ago, my wife called about two, two something, twenty-two, about three, and she was having, I'm not attacked anymore. I, I called nine-one-one, he wanted to know if the phone in Washington came, but I didn't know whether it was worth, uh, for, for, that was somebody shows up, and that took about sixty minutes to get there.
Well, frankly, it was volunteer organization, right?
It is volunteers, and it depends on who's available in time, at the time of the event.
So no police or anybody coming?
Police, well, you get it right, nine-one-one, sometimes it'll roll over to another nine-one-one, you got to request a property on nine-one-one. Or call the sheriff office straight out, then the property will just come.
Get the common sheriff.
No, not nine-one-one. You can call nine-one-one, but act, request that they connect to the property on nine-one-one, 'cause sometimes you won't get.
Are you doing it on cell phone?
Well, I need, yeah, it was on cell phone, they pick up somewhere.
You need to do that, if you own a landline, it should go straight to, it should go straight to the sheriff's office.
Yeah. I like that, totally.
You standing up? Got hit a motion?
I motion to return.
Meeting is adjourned.